Here. Public hearing is over two ordinances. First is ordinance number 679. This is an ordinance adopting and enacting a comprehensive codification and revision of the ordinances of the city of Clinton, Tennessee. That sounds very exciting. Would anybody like to speak on that? Second ordinance is number 680. This is an ordinance to amend Title 14, chapters 2 through 13 of the Clinton, the City of Clinton Municipal Code. Anybody like to speak on that? Public hearings adjourned. Call to order, regular meeting.
Councilman McQuine.
Here.
Councilman McRae.
Here.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman Hatem.
Here.
And Mayor.
Here. Do I hear a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. This time I'd like to ask Vice Mayor Gann for the prayer and also remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Before the prayer, I would like to take a moment of silence for all of our friends and our friend Freddie Fagan. He's been ill this last week and we hope and pray that he has a speedy recovery.
Our fathers, we come to thee, we thank you for all the blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We pray that you be with those that are having issues. We pray especially for our friend Freddie as he goes through his issues. We pray that you would be with all the citizens of Clinton, lead God direct and be with them. We know that many have trials and tribulations that we don't know about. Be with us as we try to make the appropriate decisions to make this city even a better place to live and a better place to do business. Be with us in all that we do, for it's in thy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Larry. Do you hear a motion to approve and do I hear a motion to review and approval of amendments of the previous meeting dated August 28, 2023?
So moved second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. At this time, we'll recognize any visitors or citizens that have a grievance or praise for the, for the city. Speak now or forever hold your peace. Communications from the mayor, first of all, I'm going to wish someone in the audience a happy birthday, 52nd birthday, by the way, Scott Ray. Thank you. Happy birthday. It only gets better, buddy, I'm telling you.
Oh, yeah. The way you hit the top of the hill.
Yeah, yeah. You already got one of these, so you're ahead of the game. You're doing well. Also, I'd like to, I'll ask Vice Mayor Gann to read a proclamation. This is a suicide prevention awareness month, and I'd like for him to read the, read the proclamation.
City-county proclamation from the offices of the mayor, suicide prevention awareness month, September 2023. Whereas suicide is one of the most disruptive and tragic events a family and a community can experience, with more than 1,100 lives lost in Tennessee each year and an estimated 25 attempted suicides for each suicide death. And whereas suicide is the 11th leading cause of death in Tennessee, the third leading cause of death among youth and young adults at ages 10 to 24, as well as the second leading cause of death of adults ages 35 to 44, and the sixth leading cause of death for adults 45 to 54. And whereas more than three lives a day are lost to suicide in Tennessee, which means we lose 21 Tennesseans each week and 97 people each month. And whereas Tennessee veterans, active-duty military, National Guardsmen face a disproportionate risk as compared to the general population, with more dying from suicide than combat, and whereas public awareness of this tragic problem is the key to preventing further suffering and loss of life, and the risk for human self-destruction can be reduced through awareness, education, and treatment, as the highest risk for suicide is among the survivors of those who died by suicide or those who have attempted suicide. And whereas suicide prevention has been declared a state priority by the governor and the Tennessee legislature has declared teen suicide prevention as a state priority in partnership with the Tennessee Suicide Prevention Network to implement the Tennessee Strategy for Suicide Prevention. And whereas Tennessee is a national leader in the effort to prevent suicide, being one of the first states to develop a suicide prevention and evaluation plan covering the lifespan, and whereas 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline, the 988, my fault, Crisis Lifeline provides 24/7 free and confidential support for people in distress, prevention and crisis resources for you or your loved ones, and has been practiced, and has best practices for professionals in the United States. And whereas the governor of Tennessee has appointed a Suicide Prevention Network Advisory Council to coordinate the implementation of this Tennessee Strategy for Suicide Prevention. And whereas the Tennessee Suicide Prevention Network is a grassroots collaboration of Tennesseans and organizations working to eliminate the stigma of suicide, educate the community about the warning signs of suicide, and ultimately reduce the rate of suicide in our state. And whereas every member of our community should understand that through our life struggles, we all need occasional reminder that we are silently fighting our own battles. And whereas we encourage all Tennesseans to take the time to inquire as to the well-being of their family, friends, and to generally convey their appreciation for their existence by any gesture they deem appropriate. A simple phone call, message, handshake, or hug can go a long way toward helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer. And therefore, I, Scott Burton, Mayor of Clinton, do hereby proclaim September 2023 in Clinton, Tennessee, as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and do urge all citizens to work to prevent suicide and to raise awareness and tolerance around all people affected by this tragedy. This proclamation adopted on the 25th day of September 2023.
Thank you, Larry. Someone's here for this, I'll get signed and leave it up here for you. Moving on to community reports, city school board report, Ms. Johnson.
Good evening. A couple of Clinton City updates, but before I share about that, I do have to congratulate my friend David Quainer for walking in to city council today. As you know, he belonged to me on school board for several years before he came to you, and so I know that he has fought a two-year, two-year battle and has been awful brave and patient. So that did, I think, all of our hearts good to see him walk in today. Wanted to let you know that we are currently in the process of a big project across all three Clinton City schools. We are moving from our key access to a FOB access that is tied into our security system and also with our cameras. They are currently doing that with South Clinton right now, and then we'll move to North Clinton and Clinton Elementary. So we hope by the end of November that all of our schools will have the FOB access instead of key access as we move one step closer to just securing the campuses and the buildings. I have a couple of shout-outs of good things that are happening in Clinton City schools. Jason Glasshauser is our music teacher at North and South Clinton Elementary, and he actually has won for the second consecutive year in a row the CMA Foundation Music Teacher of Excellence Award. And so there is a grant for the classroom and a personal grant for that as well. This is the second year that he has won. You have the ability to win three years in a row, so I know that he is going to try to shoot for that third year next year, but he is doing great things at both North and South Clinton. And then for the birthday boy today, who is extremely excited that he has caught up with me for the next nine months, but then I'll take the lead again, I wanted you all to know that he has been asked to serve. There is a TASBO, which is the Tennessee Association of School Business Officials, and he has served on that board for several years. And then they have a regional, a Southern Association called SASBO, and he actually was asked to be the Tennessee representative on that board for the Southern region. And so I think that is just a testament of how lucky we are to have him and his knowledge and his conservative, his conservative viewpoints. But congratulations to him for being able to serve in that, but also represent Clinton City Schools. Then also wanted to let you know the Clinton 5K is coming up on October the 21st. That is a Saturday, and all the proceeds, that is an education foundation sponsored event. Todd Temple does a great job with that. But they have moved it back to River Bend and Riverside, so it is going to be under the Green Bridge this year, which we are super excited about because it is now a flat course and we don't have to worry about the train. So all of the proceeds to that go to health and wellness grants for both Anderson County and Clinton City Schools. And then, believe it or not, the first nine weeks is going to be up next Friday, October 6th, we finish up a fourth of the school year, so that's kind of crazy. We will enter fall break, October the 9th through the 13th, and then that following Monday, to coincide with Anderson County's calendar, we moved our in-service day from the Friday before fall break to now it is the Monday after fall break. So Monday, October 16th will be a in-service day, and kids will come back on the 17th to start the second nine weeks. Any questions for me?
Any questions for Kelly? What was the date on the 5K again?
21st of October. And then Scott Ray does have a budget amendment. I did offer for, to do that for him on his behalf for his birthday, but he said there was no better place that he would rather be than at a city council meeting.
You know why that is, don't you, Kelly? Because we passed this codification and he wants a copy of it and read it. That's what it is. You finished reading the budget, now you're ready for something else.
I'll make it quick as usual, I suppose. You have a budget amendment, first of the year. We increased appropriations by $92,000 and change in the general purpose school fund and $72,000 and change in the federal projects. Just remember, the federal projects are just reimbursement grants. The money is allocated. We propose a use for the funds. That use gets approved. We spend the money according to what we proposed, and then they reimburse us for those expenditures. Any questions on budget?
Is this budget amendment number one?
Yes.
Any questions for Scott? Hear a motion for, for budget amendment number one?
So moved second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Quainer.
Yes.
Councilman McRae.
Yes.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman Hatem.
Yes.
Councilman Manis.
Yes.
And Mayor.
Yes. Budget amendment number one passes.
Thank you.
Thanks. Happy birthday. Clinton Regional Planning Commission Report, Vice Mayor Gann.
The Clinton, first of all, the Board of Zoning and Appeals met on September the 11th, 2023. Applicant Brian A. Carlton requesting to allow residential carport to be located in the front setback on a corner lot located at 500 Greenwood Drive. This is to be placed on a carport beside the existing house that would extend partially into the front yard. This is already an existing paved area where the camper is currently parked and uncovered. And based upon that, the motion to approve the variance was, was approved based on the reasonableness of the request. The variance is the minimal action needed to avoid practical difficulties and does not undermine the intent of the zoning. And so that, as I say, was passed. Applicant Ralph Smith requesting variance to reduce lot size from 12,000 square feet to 7,096 square feet, reduce front setback building line from 75 feet to 73.45 feet for property located at 202 North Apache Road. This is, is also a final plat on the planning commission. This request is due to a medical necessity rather than doing some other things. It was decided that it would be best to grant a variance, to go ahead and approve the variance as requested based on the uniqueness of the situation, the reasonableness of the request, the variance is the minimal action needed to avoid exceptional hardship difficulties, and opposes the purpose that the board to temper the strict application of zoning regulations in special circumstances. And again, this is for a medical special situation where it is needed to be vet close. Applicant Ned Ferguson requesting side setback from 15 feet to 12.4 feet, rear setback from 30 to 16.9, and front setback from 30 feet to 14.6 for property located at 400 North Hick Street. This is, some of you may remember Dr. Powers' old office, which is, is now the surveyor's office. And based upon the interpretation of staff, they're going to put a pavilion in front of it, and since it is subordinate to the existing principal building, is therefore an accessory building, subject to the provisions, the accessory building would be required to be a minimum of 10 feet from adjoining lot line, which the pavilion does meet the requirement, and therefore the interpretation of the staff is that variance request was not necessary. So it was moved on to the plat hearing a little bit later. The Regional Planning Commission also met on the same night. Applicant Mary Hansen requesting final plat review and approval for property located at 250 Wellwood Lane. This is dividing a property of record into two lots. There were a number of questions about access and flag lot and some signatures and problems with street frontage and everything. And so after a fairly lengthy discussion, it was decided to defer this item until October the 9th meeting due to a lack of information that was provided to make that decision. Applicant Alex Hamilton requesting final plat review of property located at 318 Lee Road. There was nobody here to present that request, so as a result, it was deferred till next month also. Applicant McGrew Engineering and Surveying requesting final plat review and approval for property located at 605 North Charles Seaver Boulevard. This was a minor plat division, really basically what the one we're, the type of thing that we're seeking to, to get to a consent agenda eventually where we don't have to deal with these except in a bulk manner. Applicant Ralph Smith requesting final plat review and approval for property located at 202 North Apache Road. All the corrections are submitted, variances were granted. Again, this is because of a medical hardship, and after a brief discussion, this was, this plat was approved. And then Ned Ferguson requesting site plan review and approval for property located at 400 North Hick Street. Again, this is the old Dr. Powers address. This will include a pavilion for their employees on the front side near Hick Street, which is at least 10 feet off the property line. There will be a pavilion there primarily for the employees to, I think, have lunch, and also a garage on the backside, which is pretty much out of sight from Hick Street. Three, I think it's a three-bay garage that will be of the same color, won't be the same construction, but it'd be appropriate, hopefully appropriate color. That's what we've been promised, and it will be on the backside where it's pretty much out of, out of sight. Any questions?
Any questions for Larry?
There was some interesting.
Thanks, Larry. We'll pass the CUB report for next month. You have anything under Green Macadoo?
Very successful Green Tide banquet, three young people, and I wish I could remember their names, were given $1,200 scholarships based on essays. One to Oak Ridge, one to Anderson County, and one to Oak Ridge, I think. And they're planning to make this, this, for those of you who are longtime residents of Clinton, these were done in honor of Eugene Gallagher, who was a longtime supporter of Green Macadoo, and his, his children have been very active throughout Clinton schools. So we're calling it the Green, the Eugene Gallagher Scholarship, and we're hoping to provide at least $1,200 scholarships to all the county schools. One's two.
Any other questions for Larry? Thank you. Catherine?
I just wanted to thank the city for their partnership, Jeff Little for bringing out the fire truck. We had a great event for the Air National Guard Band when they came out, and I found out at that event that that was actually the very last event that they would be doing. They've lost their funding and they were supposed to have another event after us, but they were unable to do it with so many of them trying to find new jobs. So I'm really proud of the fact that we were able to honor them, host them, show them a beautiful side of Clinton, hopefully a warm and kind side of Clinton. So thank you for partnering with us to be able to put that on. We are, tomorrow will be our third Tasty Tuesday event in a set of four, so we've got two more that will be out in our green space area, and we have completed phase three of our historic walking tour, so we now have 36 historic walking signs in the downtown area. We just added 16 more, so very excited about that. And of course, our big event that's coming up is the Antique Festival. That's October 6th and 7th. It takes a great deal of people to put on an event like this. The city certainly helps us with so much of the little things that go unnoticed, like the trash and the security. So again, thank you to the city for allowing us to put this on. I know it's an event that a lot of our businesses downtown really depend on and look forward to, and so we are making every effort that we can to make this the best one yet. We've got about over 100 vendors that will be with us, some on Friday, some just Saturday, so we're really, we're really excited. That's going to be here before we know it in just a few weeks. And then lastly, I sent you all an email about the Tourism Enhancement Grant. So that is a grant that I got word of from Andy Wallace with Economic Development. He sent that to me because he knew that about a year ago. We started looking at doing a pavilion in the downtown area. That project started because we wanted to have another place in the downtown area that didn't necessarily have us closing Market Street every time we had an event, something that we've talked at length with Roger and the city about how much easier it is to do some of the smaller events, especially events that include kids that are away from Market Street. So funding is always a challenge with those kind of things, so this Tourism Enhancement Grant would give us $100,000 to go towards that pavilion. There's a 30% match that Historic Downtown Clinton would provide, so I'm not here to ask you guys for money today. What I'm here to ask is for a motion that you would allow the application of the, to Tourism Enhancement to go through the city. So it has to be applied for, from the city, not Historic Downtown. I do know that there are some concerns about where that's located and where that is in the downtown area. The goal of Main Street is always to enhance the downtown area, so I look forward to more discussions about where we put it, where it makes the most sense for parking, where it makes most sense for our businesses downtown, in the community at large. So I'm not asking for a set plan on that. I'm just asking that we be able to apply for this grant with your blessing.
Hear a motion for approval? And if you make, when you make the motion, I would just make it approve, if you, if you make the motion on it, to approve, and just state something with, with, with a location to be, to be determined. Just make sure we're clear on that.
And Mayor, do we know how big this is going to be?
It's going to be a, it's proposed now a 40 by 60?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Which is?
So 60 foot long.
Now, is that the, I mean, is there any flexibility with that?
Yeah, probably. Those are the plans that we came up with and that we got priced out, so that's what is in the grant that we're applying for. But there would definitely be some changes, I think, made to that as well in the construction. The way that it's drawn out now, I actually would like to make some changes because I want some of the beams to come out, so it's more of a performance area for kids. I don't know if you know this, but every time we do an event, we spend about $4,000 on a stage and tent every time we do an event. So I would love to have a more permanent fixture that allows the Air National Band to come in without me having a fundraiser to set up a stage and a tent for them. So that's kind of where this comes from, and that, and that's part of the grant. I think that's part of the reason we would get it, would be because we spend so much money on that. But we, you know, in our partnerships with Clinton City Schools, how many times we have them down there performing, you know, we also do a lot with the Clinton High School Band. I would love to have them down there on a regular basis under this pavilion, so I do actually want to change a little bit of it and make it a more performance arena.
Wendy, did you want to make a motion on that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. That it's contingent on the plans, and we know exactly where it's going to be, because I do have a bunch of questions on it.
Well, let's get through that and we, the discussion part, because I've got some questions too. So I don't think you can be contingent, because this is just to prove, being applying for the grant, with the understanding.
Okay.
That location will be determined.
Okay.
That's what I'm getting.
That sounds good.
And I think, you know, going forward, if Historic Downtown could have a workshop with city council, some of the businesses, again, to kind of figure out all the needs and where that goes, I think that would be, you know, but again, right now, we have no money to do that, so I don't, you know, I'd like to get that first.
So we have a motion on the floor?
Second.
Second. Discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I'm all for entertainment, as you know, that's what I do. But I guess I just, without really knowing what the plan is, it's a little bit hard to envision how big it's going to be and where it's going to be, because I know we have, like, you know, the apartments being built, and so you have to wonder where these residents are going to park, and then the street, and Main Street is about to be torn up, so you have to wonder where those businesses are going to park. So do you have any, like?
So when we started this project, we, it actually came from the Chamber. So I was on the Business Development Committee for the Chamber, and they had an entire plan that they drew up probably four years ago with Gianni's sketches that he did and his vision for Clinton, and it actually wiped out all of the parking in that back parking lot. And I looked at that and said, oh my gosh, this is a million-dollar project. How could we ever get there and achieve that? But here's a part of it that maybe I could do, and so we kind of came up with the green space and pavilion area, and we did do it down in the lower parking lot at the time just because the Chamber had an event down there, we were having the food trucks down there, the farmer's market was there, so there were a lot, there was a lot of activity right there. But again, I think, you know, before we even build, we'd come to Planning Commission, there'd be a whole process and the discussion, you know, I know Scott has some ideas on other locations that it could go, but I think having this, you know, other area and the downtown area could be beneficial if we could get the funding, but there's a lot that will obviously come after that, so. And a lot of those plans were in the grant. I don't know if you, and I know it's long, I don't know if you had a chance to review all of it.
I don't know that I even saw, saw it. Do you know what email you sent it to?
I sent it to the W. Manis at, whatever the city council was, I sent it to.
Yeah, I never, I didn't even see it. So I don't even know that I got it, so.
Okay. Well, there's a whole thing of plans, and I can, I'll resend it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Catherine, what's the timeframe on this? If you, when you apply for the grant and you receive it, what's the execution? What's the timeframe on that?
You, you know, it's same with our downtown improvement grant. You get a couple of years, just because we all know, dealing with the TAP grant, and it's hard to get anybody to work, and it's hard to get supplies, and it's hard to do anything, so you get a lot of grace period.
Well, you know, Catherine and I talked today about it. My hesitation is, is, I mean, there's a lot of things that's going on here the next 12 months, maybe 18 months, and I like to see an opportunity just to see, let the dust settle a little bit and kind of see how everything's playing out as far as literally let the dust settle, set out, and just see, see how the parking looks, because, you know, the biggest, you know, when the Darty thing was going on, the Darty Building, the second biggest complaint was, there's not enough parking, and it took me by surprise that some of that parking was, you know, taken away when we restripped and made it green, more green and all that stuff. So I'd be interested to see how that's, that's going to look when some, some of these things get done. I think the Darty Building now is on track to be done sometime in February, then hopefully we'll start work on, on downtown in January.
And listen, as much as I would love to say, we'll get this grant and it'll be done tomorrow.
No, I think it's better. I think, I think if it's extended out a little bit, I think it's a better thing for, in my mind, so.
Yeah.
That's just, that was just my question from a timeframe standpoint.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I just have one more question. Have you ever thought about, because they have mobile stages, it's pretty easy to put up, take down, and then move out. Has that ever been a consideration? Has that ever been a consideration?
That's news to me. I don't know about those. I don't know where we would store those if that was something that we could own. And possibly, you know, that too. But again, trying to move away from constantly having events just on Market Street.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I know there's a couple of business owners downtown. Would any of y'all like to speak? Questions? Y'all will be involved, and you know, when we have meetings like this, y'all will certainly be invited to, to give your input on that. But I think it's the best approach to go.
Yep, absolutely.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. General Government Report. Mr. Houck.
Thank you, Mayor. Current projects. Due to prospective contract concerns, we have worked with our project architect to reconstruct the bid packet into separate components for the building portion, the pool and splash pad portion of the project. The revised fast track calls for new bid openings to be dated for October 19th at 2:00 P.M. And that's for the J.C. Park Project. Ridgeview Drive Traffic Study, as discussed at last month's council meeting, we met with our traffic engineers and discussed the safety concerns on Ridgeview Drive. Cannon and Cannon Incorporated has been retained to conduct a traffic safety study, including recommendations for safety improvements, including a cost estimate. Project activities, due to the holiday schedule, we'd recommend changing the December city council meeting to Friday, December the 15th at 1:00 P.M. I need approval.
Motion to change. The move. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? This is December 15th at 1:00. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
We'll do the luncheon, employee luncheon at 11:30 at the Community Center prior to that. Public Works. Sealed bids were received on Thursday, September the 21st for replacing the roof at the Public Works with garage. Based on review of the bids received, we would recommend the project be awarded to Aspen Contracting in a total cost of $50,000. Need approval.
Motion to approve.
So move.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sorry, I was reading in front of you.
Okay. Old National Guard Armory. Planning and program design for the proposed facility for the former National Guard Armory in conjunction with the Boys and Girls Club of the Tennessee Valley is proceeding. As such, we need to authorize the Design Service Agreement for the portion of the project, which includes roofing, building infrastructure, HVAC, plumbing, electrical, and ADA compliance. We would therefore request authorization to execute the Architecture and Engineering Service Agreement for the project with studio floor design at a total cost estimate of $52,500. A significant portion of this estimate is included in the CDBG grant budget. I think about $40,000 is covered in the grant.
Here a motion to approve.
So move.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. Finance, I'll defer to Chris.
All right. Thank you, Roger. We are two months completed into the fiscal year. 16.7% of the fiscal year is complete. Revenues and expenditures are as expected. You may see in other revenues and transfers, that's kind of increased. We've received the county's portion of the paving project out of the industrial park already, so that, that's shown in our, in our revenues. Fund balance is still as expected. It's at 8.6 in unassigned fund balance and all others, total 13.7. Wanted to mention, we had, well, I have a budget amendment in October for the first three months of the fiscal year. But I wanted to mention our softball game charity event that we had on the, on the 16th. I thought it was a huge success. We raised over $750 for the Isaiah House. So when you combine that with the employee picnic where we raised money for the Isaiah House, it's over $1,000 to the Isaiah House. And unfortunately, the city didn't win, but we're, as we hire new people coming on next year, that their, their softball prowess will be considered. So if there are any ringers out there needing a, new job, and we have openings, let us know.
Did you have the county lawyer, was he reffing again this year?
He did not. He did not. We had actual, yeah. And things were going fine until they brought in a relief pitcher who started actually throwing strikes for the city. And that unfortunately led to a lot of hitting by the county, so.
Was that relief pitcher here? Is that you?
That was, I didn't realize we weren't supposed to throw strikes. Next year, I'll know.
Somebody said because JB was absent, I don't know.
That's exactly right. But any questions for Chris? You want to go ahead and do, you want to go ahead and do your budget amendment?
I don't have one. I have one for next month.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Police Department. The police department has obtained a grant from the Bureau of Justice Assistance for the purchase of body worn cameras for patrol officers. The grant's a 50/50 match grant. We have solicited quotes from qualified vendors for the purchase of 20 cameras and the associated software. Based on the increasing need of this type of technology, we would therefore request authorization to purchase 20 body worn cameras from Custom Signals at a total cost of $20,953.
Motion to approve?
I'll make the motion, but I got a question.
Well, let's, let's ask a question after we get it a second.
That's what you're going to clarify. I'll make the motion.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Further discussion?
Question, Roger. Are we going to eventually give everybody a camera? Because you've got people in uniforms sometimes, no cameras. So why have 20 if we can't do everybody in the police department?
Yeah. So most of this cost is for the software. Each added unit is about $600. But we have some digital ally body worn cameras now that kind of fit the SROs and some of the other people. Be clueless myself when I go out, so.
So everybody will have a camera? If they're in uniform?
Yeah.
Okay. It's all, it's all a question I have. I just think we should buy them for everybody if we're going to, if we're going to have to wear a uniform. There's no use having them for part of them.
And I know I had another question asked by another council about the liability. Councilman Howard asked me that before the meeting, and I, and I think there is a liability there, but I think it's a good liability. I think the, the police officers ought to be held accountable for their actions, and think it's a good reason of having the cameras in the cars and on the officers.
Will there be a policy on that?
There is a policy in effect. We're using the body worn cameras that the SROs are now, so.
I was about to say, you probably had inventory of those before you get these.
Yeah, we have several of that. It's a different brand. We've got them over the years, but.
But they all work.
Yeah.
Yeah, there needs to be a policy.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things, information wise, it's not on my report. Got, got a phone call today about 4:00 that Roger's group with the T-Dot Project is, will be moving into Clinton Sunday night, this coming Sunday night, to do the asphalt on Main Street and Clinch Avenue. So next week, they will be paving part of Main Street, all the portion that's not covered under the TAP grant. So they'll be doing from Long Meyer to Colom Street, we decided, Bill?
Long Meyer, Phil, East Road to Lindwood Street and South Line.
So, got that. So they'll be moving in, probably taking them three or four nights to be doing that, but they'll be working while we're sleeping. So probably won't see a lot of road closure. So that'll start then. Another thing, just wanted to kind of bring you all a little bit up to date. I've talked to some of you individually about it. In May of this year, our state legislatures passed Senate Bill 526 and House Bill 817, which dealt with municipal elections, which will quite a bit affect our city elections when it comes up this next cycle, which is in 2024. What it did was, it was actually first there to target Knoxville, but it was, it was determined probably a couple of weeks before the final reading of the bill that it also affected 17 other cities in the state of Tennessee, us being one of those cities. And what, what it, how it affected us was because we run in three wards, but, but our, by our charter, we're elected at large. And that's why our, our city's charter has been for 50 years, actually 60 years probably. And if, what it did was change the law to say that if you run in wards, only people in those wards can vote for you, which in some cases meaning only a few hundred people could elect a third of our council, which is in direct conflict with our city charter. So there's a major issue there. Probably since early to mid-June, I've been working with, actually myself and Bill have been working with MTAS, TML, several other cities, other cities' law departments. And really, this thing is, is about as clear as mud. We've been working with the State Election Commission, our local state, the election officials on it. It's becoming somewhat clearer, but we still don't have the complete answers on it. It's not only going to affect city council, but it's also going to affect our school board. It's probably going to change, it's probably going to take a charter change in our August election of next year. It's going to take a change in our ordinance for our school board. Right now, we don't know what that's going to look like, though. I met with two other attorneys this morning, gave me a completely different answer than I met with attorneys last week. So it's, it's, we're still trying to figure it out, but it's, it's caused some major issues. One of the big things it's caused for the city of Clinton, out of those 17 cities, only three of the cities have home rule charters. There's only 16 cities in the state of Tennessee that have home rule charters. We're one of the, we're one of them. Three of the cities that are involved in this election change, us, Knoxville, and Red Bank are home rule. That creates a bigger problem because your, your public act charter cities, all they have to do to change their charter is have their state legislatures actually present a bill in the state legislatures next January to change their charter. We can't do that. Only our citizens can change our charter. And they can only do that by being on the ballot at a state election, where our next, next state election is August 1st of next year. Well, our next city election, our guys will pick up the ballot, I think, is June 15th, and the qualifying is August 14th. So there are very few windows that we're trying to figure out how that's going to work. Mark Stevens is working real well with us across the street to figure these out. But once again, we're getting conflicting advice from different attorneys, and it may be that we, we have to hire a, someone that specializes in election law to help us on this. There's a possibility a few of the cities may file litigation against the state, that we don't know how that'll turn out. We will have to make some kind of decision by April the 4th, that's the filing deadline, to get on the August ballot if we have to do a charter amendment. It's going to be my recommendation, once we find out a little more what's going on, that we probably do a joint workshop, city council and the school board. Probably need to get some input at that point if we're looking at a charter amendment from our citizens. I've been keeping Kelly up to date on what's going on with it, at least a couple of times a week, so she knows what's going on. But, but this will be the first change in our charter since 1990. And once again, this is not something that we've, we've called, it's something that's happened at the state level, that's been a pretty disruptive change in our local election procedure. Just kind of an update on what's happening with it.
Any questions for Roger?
Roger, every time I head up toward the interstate, somebody wants to know about our red lights.
Actually, we got the cabinets in.
I checked them today, and they're actually working on wiring it. They told me they should have a program picked by the end of the week. It'll be on caution, blackened for a week before it goes live.
Yeah. So we got, we got parts in. Yeah. So we should have something going probably here in a couple of weeks.
Great. Anything else? Thanks, Roger. Under Ordinances and Resolutions, second, second and final reading of ordinances, ordinance number 679, an ordinance adopting and enacting a comprehensive codification and revision of the ordinances of the city of Clinton, Tennessee. Here a motion for approval?
So move.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Kleiner?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
Yes.
Councilman Harrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Menendez?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes. Ordinance number 679 passes on second and final reading.